Continued success in Bristol, both on and off the field. Mayor Kinko Kane to Bristol.
Thank you, sir. You will win next time.
Little information for first year in Bristol. Bristol Blues brought in over forty thousand people through the gates and was a successful season. Of participation, Lori Price.
Yep, and didn't name it just for... Sure, thanks. Lori Price, thirty-four Woodside Way, Bristol. Thanks very much. I'm bringing forward here a quality of life issue that affects me and other people on a cul-de-sac and other residential streets. That mowing, industrial mowing and leaf blowing takes place prior to eight AM on weekdays, and there's no, apparently no regulation to stop this. And I believe that areas that are not zoned for business or construction that are residential should have restrictions on when noise can begin. Industrial noise, industrial mowers. So that's my request that this be discussed and something possibly be done about the problem. Woken up from March to ongoing. Thank you.
What we'll do is we'll ask ordinance to take a look at this and see what can be done if any.
I did try previously with ordinance, but I just suffered another year, so I thought I'd give it another try.
We'll give it another try in ordinance.
So, thanks very much.
Alright, thank you. Ed Duttco.
Hi, Ed Duttco, one sixteen Lewis Road, Bristol. Mr. Price has heard what you have to say. Well, good luck to you, because I didn't ever happen to meet a lot of your candidates. Thank you all for running. You sometimes have thankless jobs. Some of you don't make much money at the council positions at least. The three of you are re-running for office. We're going to see something maybe different. Maybe we'll see status quo as the mayor. So it's going to be interesting. Henry Martin, yeah, thank you. You're retiring from the city council. Rich Mizakowski, thank you both. But Henry, you've got to admit, it's better to be a state senator than a council member, isn't it? Right? You know, I just tell them like this, and I heard that with downtown Bristol, since the election is only three weeks away, I think we know nothing is going to happen in the next three weeks with downtown Bristol. But right after that, after we see a new council, because we're going to see new council members, and let's get going. Things take so long in this town. Even what my family experienced over here with Southeast Bristol Business Park. I mean, it's ten years later since we moved out, and finally, you're going to get a tenant for the premier lot. Granted, it's just going to be a bunch of rusty containers. Had to move out for a bunch of containers, that's the way I feel. That's the way my mother feels, and she's ninety years old. I think it was horribly wrong what the Democratic administration did to my family during those days. Marketing, see now, with that, all heart. See, that doesn't resonate with me. It never did, all heart, after what happened to my folks. Shirts, hats, how many you sell this week? My guess is none. I haven't seen anybody we want. You know, I'm going to get home, I'm going to watch the Democratic presidential debate tonight, and as Donald Trump would say, "I bet you'll fall asleep after ten minutes." So, I'm going to go watch that, you know, and I like Donald Trump, but, you know, he said eminent domain is wonderful, and I know it wasn't. You know, and I called him a radio show, Howie Carr. I don't know if you've ever heard of Howie Carr. He's all across New England, and he's got a new affiliate in Hartford. I talked to him on the air for about ten minutes, and told him the exact, the whole story. You know, it's just not good. And ma'am, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Because people in residential areas, they want to, they don't want to be infringed down. Let's not go there again. We made that mistake before, so, but good luck to you all, all you folks who are running for election, all the new candidates, and I guess I'll see some of you on November third.
Thank you. Catherine Telfer.
Catherine Telfer, seventy-six Chestnut Street. I'm here to speak on the opposition towards synthetic turf. With the information that I've sought out about synthetic turf, it all ends with one big question as to why. There is definitely proof of more injuries attributed to the fact that the turf doesn't adjust to the foot movements of the athletes, and funny enough, that's not my major concern. My concerns are, if burning tires is known to release fine particles that have been found to cause excess mortality and hospitalizations for heart disease and cancer by the American Academy of Pediatrics Committee on Environmental Health, can anyone tell me the difference between that and the grinding up of tires to produce crumb rubber for sports venues? Not only are toxic particles released while burning tires, there is crumb dust that becomes airborne while players are on the synthetic turf fields. The dust then gets into the pores of sweating athletes, and it exposes them to a number of health risks, cancer in all forms being one of them. Before finances are discussed on any topic, there should be non-biased testing done to state one hundred percent no health risks. Carrying on with plans and approvals without the proper testing will see children in the future developing these health risks. And here's a throwback for you. The tobacco companies, you know, they push their product knowing that there were health risks involved, and not making any of the findings public. Now, it seems to me that there's been enough information put out there, there's not been enough information put out there, so that people can make an educated decision. Sports is part of our culture, and my family is no exception to that. I just know, as my three little granddaughters are on soccer field, I'd like to cheer and root for them, rather than worry that one day I may be sitting by their hospital bed after a session of chemotherapy. So I conclude that there'll be more research and testing done before we jump into this, what could be disastrous situation that our children will face in the future. Thank you.
Shaun Lewis.
Thank you for dressing up today. I didn't outline what I was going to say, so I had to make myself look good. That's also for the big announcement. Shaun Lewis, fifty-three Lancaster Road. Tonight, I've brought some information to hand out to you all. Basically, I'm looking at the last decade of Bristol and development, and the economic data, and there's something called the CERC town profile, which I looked up on the internet. And if you compare the CERC town profile from two thousand five to the CRC town profile from two thousand fourteen, you'll find that fifty-two percent of construction jobs were lost in the city of Bristol since the two thousand five CRC. Twenty-seven percent of manufacturing jobs were lost. One hundred and fifteen percent increase in jobs in government. And there's a thirty-one percent increase in unemployment. You'll also find, if you look at this, that there's been a thirty-three percent increase in tax revenue in the city of Bristol. So if we're trying to grow the tax base, I don't know really where that money's going to. I know it didn't make my taxes go down, and it didn't improve my quality of life either. You also can see that the unemployment rate went from six percent to nine percent in that period of time, and, well, the city of Bristol made the top five list for the employers in the city of Bristol. So, I don't know, I think this is, this is really dire circumstance. You would think this would be something that somebody would be campaigning on. But if you read the newspaper and you listen to the letters and stuff, you'd think that the development over here is the most important thing. Well, Bristol's obviously growing elsewhere, so I'm really not sure why the focus on the development over here, where, well, it just happens to be where the state would like to develop. Oh, the state, oh, the DECD, they're very interested in cultural arts and transit-oriented development, high-density apartments in the downtown. But it seems to me that these people that are professing that they have vision for Bristol, they can't see what's going on right in front of them, they've got the state's glasses on, and they're just borrowing the state's vision, and they're projecting it to the people of Bristol, as if it was the most important thing. Well, gee, I guess slippery slopes aren't part of the discussion since the Boys Club tried to get their permit waived, fee waived, like that was a big issue. But we can have a developer who's got ten point five billion dollars in investment money coming to the Northeast that needs a taxpayer handout over here, and we're calling it a partnership. It's not a partnership. This is actually, this is the city, this is people asking the city to guarantee a loan that's high-risk. If you want to grow Bristol, it's already growing elsewhere. This is not the center, nor is the most important issue in Bristol. And I don't have time to talk about open government, but I think you, some people messed that one up too. Thank you.
Shaun.
Oh, I'm going to miss you.
Go to the Capitol. I had everyone to see at the Capitol. They meet at seven o'clock on second Tuesday around...
I can't even make the regional executive meeting, but, well, actually, I do have a, well, if you want to talk about Levi example, there's a woman, Joanna, with the Arctic Valley Council of Governments, and she, she actually is very helpful, and I'm going to have those minutes, and I'm going to post that on my website, so if you want open government, you can visit my website.
Shaun, thank you.
Can I give you that information?
Sure.
It's ERC, but it's also in our state data lab, which shows wherever we think is the most important place to grow Bristol, which happens to be the highest density of low-income housing in the city.
Number four.
Good evening. By now, I think everyone's probably heard the news that I'll be retiring in the next couple of weeks. In Leaven, Connecticut, heading to Florida, where I've been offered a chief of police job in Fort Orange, Florida. So, I just wanted to say a couple of words tonight. It is very much a bittersweet moment for me here. Over my lifetime, Bristol has been home to me, and has been very good to me. I'm a product of the Bristol school system, of the many Bristol sports programs. I have had a blessed career as a Bristol Police Department for the past twenty-six years. It truly has been an honor and a privilege to lead our police department. I leave knowing that our police department has improved its operations and our culture. Over the past three years, we have been able to achieve tier-one state accreditation status, implementation of a career development program at PD, walking beats and mountain bike patrols in the downtown area, the reallocation of manpower to fully staff a traffic division, the civilianization of certain tasks allowing for police officers to be reassigned to patrol duties, and the creation of neighborhood watch programs. We've also had the implementation of Narcan program to combat heroin overdoses, and implemented a lethality assessment program to provide services to victims of family violence. Together, we have achieved many goals, and I'm confident that this positive can-do attitude will continue long after my departure. I owe thanks to Mayor Kinko Kane, the Board of Finance, and the City Council, especially Councilman Calvin Brown, who is a liaison to our police work, has been very supportive. All of you have been very supportive to our police department. For that, I thank you. I also would like to thank the many fellow department heads who have collaborated to improve services in Bristol, and I also want to thank former Mayor Arthur Ward, who believed in me and my vision to lead the Bristol Police Department. Finally, I'd like to thank all, I'd like to thank all of you, including all of our officers, our dispatchers, and many civilian staff members, who have helped our police department achieve a respectable level of success over the last few years. Again, thank you, and it truly is a bittersweet moment for me. It's an opportunity for me, it's an opportunity for my family, but it is bittersweet. Bristol is really all I've known for my whole life, and my wife as well. So, it's a new challenge, it's definitely a new adventure, and again, it's bittersweet, and knowing that it's been a true privilege to lead our police department. Thank you for your support, and thank you on behalf of the entire police department. Thank you.
Chief Lee. Let me say that it's been an honor serving with you as mayor. You've been nothing but professional during my tenure as mayor, and very quick to respond to any issues that were brought to your attention. Today, I would put our police department up against any, and not only the state, but the country. You have brought this to one of the strongest police departments that I know of. You brought back the motorcycles, which we haven't seen in a couple of years, even though you won't let me ride them.
There's a lot of things I want to do.
But I wish you and your family great success in Florida.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to say to everyone, many of you probably know, October is Manufacturing Month in the state of Connecticut. It's a celebration statewide of the manufacturing industry, its history here in the state, and what it's meant for so many people, and also specifically with an aim to get more young people aware of what a real career in manufacturing is like in the 21st century. As part of that effort, the Connecticut Center for Advanced Technology, where I happen to be employed, hosted an event here. We host an event every year, every October on Manufacturing Day, which is the first Friday in October, called Manufacturing Mania. And due to some interest from the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce, and the Main Street Community Foundation, and several other leaders in the community, they approached CCAT and said, "It would be great if we could have this event here in Bristol." And many of you already know that Friday, October 2nd, Manufacturing Mania made its debut here in our city at the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. Nearly two hundred middle school students from the local area, including Chippens Hill and Northeast Middle Schools here in Bristol, attended the event. We had four local companies there exhibiting what they do for the students, including Rowley Spring, Arthur G. Russell, and Atlantic Precision Spring. Bristol-based NESMA, New England Spring and Metal Stamping Association, also had a presence there. I'd like to say thank you to the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce, and Jim Albert, and Cindy Scoville, and the Main Street Community Foundation, and the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, for what was truly a successful event in its own right, and an exciting opportunity, I think, for the city to be able to show off some of our manufacturing history, and what we have to offer in that industry in this month-long celebration of manufacturing. So that's that. And I'd also like to say, it didn't occur to me until Senator Martin's monologue at the last meeting that this will be the last city council meeting before the election. So of course, as I'm sure you'll hear from many of us tonight, remember to go out and vote on November 3rd. Polls are open from six AM to eight PM. You can elect two councilors from each council district. You have one vote for mayor and treasurer, and you have six votes for the Board of Ed, and nine will get elected, the top nine vote-getters will get elected. I'm not going to push a specific agenda. Many of you saw the debates. I just want to remind everybody to get out and vote, and vote your conscience this year. It's an exciting year for Bristol, and I look forward to seeing you at the polls. And maybe I'll see you next month, maybe I won't, but it's been an honor serving for two years, and thank you for the opportunity.
I just have one. Access Health CT, which is the healthcare exchanges here in Connecticut under the Affordable Care Act, are getting ready for their open enrollment. This would apply to people that have never participated in the program. Oftentimes, our children, as they age, out of our insurance and turn twenty-six, they might need to enroll. You can also change your coverage during this open enrollment period, and there are going to be two question-and-answer sessions in Central Connecticut. They're not in Bristol, but one is in Hartford, and it's tomorrow evening at Hartford City Hall from six to seven-thirty in the function room on the second floor. And there's another session in New Britain, which is at the Enrollment Center on Main Street. That's November 4th, again, from six to seven-thirty. And I think you can also go on the Access Health CT website if you have questions or concerns about open enrollment for the healthcare exchanges. That's it.
Well, it wouldn't be a complete city council meeting without bringing up chickens at least once. The Connecticut Department of Agriculture is urging local owners of flocks to please register with the CT Pro website in the event, because there's the issue of the bird flu that's outbreak, that's been killing a lot of chickens around here, and if you want to keep up on it, suddenly birds start dying in the area. I also want to say, please, you know, November 3rd, it's time to get out and vote. I wish some, I wish some candidates good luck, and I wish others well. Thank you.
Yeah, I just like, I've enjoyed my tenure on the city council, but it is time to move on, and I'll be retiring soon to spend more time with my grandchildren.
I just have two brief announcements. One dovetails with what Councilman Porter talked about. In addition to access healthcare for anybody who needs healthcare, October 15th through December 1st is also open enrollment for Medicare Part D, which is a critical program for people who use it. But also, more importantly, there's been a variety of changes to it, so the plan that you're under may not be the best one suited for your needs. So anybody who deals, especially with elderly populations, I urge you to make sure that your constituents are aware of the open window. We in Bristol have the highest number of senior citizens only behind Hartford, in the greater Hartford area. So it's a critical program, and healthcare is a major concern for many people. But when you become elderly, obviously, it's probably the major concern. Missing that window could affect their healthcare for the whole year. And my other announcement is just to remind everybody that it is Halloween season, and The Witch's Dungeon has returned to the Historical Society for its second year. Great exhibits, a great melding of two institutions, and I encourage everyone to visit if you have the opportunity. Thank you.
I just have one. Building Department is now accepting credit cards. This is something that's been asked for a while by builders and anyone who uses the office. This now finalizes, I believe, every department in City Hall except for the city clerk that accepts credit cards, and we're currently working to get them online as well. Number five.
Consent calendar, there are nine items. Five A is to place on file a new hire report for September 2015. Five B is to approve tax refunds dating October 7, 2015. Five C is to approve tax assessment freeze application for PKON Properties LLC, owner of 142 Park Street, Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with restoration of a multifamily structure per Section 5-57 of the Bristol Code of Ordinances. Five D is to approve a tax assessment freeze application for Nancy Briatica, owner of 28th Road Place, Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with restoration of a single-family structure per Section 5-57 of the Bristol Code of Ordinances. Five E is the ordinance committee to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances Section 16-2 pertaining to regulated activities in public parks, to waive the reading of the amendments and to schedule a public hearing for October 21st, 2015. Five F is the ordinance committee to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances Section 5-21.1, building permits and property subject to tax lien, to waive the reading of the amendments and to schedule a public hearing for October 21st, 2015, and waive the reading of the amendments and to schedule a public hearing for October 21st, 2015. And then the last, five G is ordinance committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances Section 21-13, donation drop boxes. Five H to refer the deferral of sidewalks at 120 Terryville Road, Bristol, to the Board of Public Works and the Board of Education. Five I to authorize the mayor, acting mayor, to sign the fiscal year 2015, 2016 Bristol Local Prevention Council grant application, and any necessary documents to effectuate the same to sponsor initiatives to prevent alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And that's it.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Item six, real estate committee.
I have motion to break. I hereby move that the city of Bristol accept the offer from Tunxus Road Associates, and I'll see, in the amount of one hundred dollars, for the city-owned property known as Ninety-Five Union Street on map thirty-one of Bristol's Assessor's Office. I further move this matter referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and review any necessary documents. I further move the mayor or acting mayor to authorize to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same. Ask for second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes.
Yes, Your Honor, I accept a few. First, from the parks. There will be a Floating Fright Night on Saturday, October 24th, at the Dennis Mamon Aquatic Center, from six PM to eight PM. And on Sunday, October 25th, from eleven AM to three PM, there will be the annual Halloween Costume Parade and Carnival in Rockwell Park. The event is free for all Bristol youth up to grade five. There will be a Howlin' Proud Dog Costume Parade, which sounds awesome. Carnival games, arts and crafts, face painting, youth costume parade, train rides, and more. Each child will receive a free trick-or-treat bag. Again, that's Sunday, October 25th, from eleven AM to three PM. Also, I'd like to give a shout-out to the mayor's task force on energy consumption. I know many of you probably came through on Saturday, October 3rd, through the household hazardous waste collection that the city did. The mayor's task force on energy consumption, in conjunction with EverSource, were out there that day as well, doing our final light bulb swap, where we took in old used light bulbs, incandescent bulbs, and exchanged them for more energy-efficient LED light bulbs, and we are finally through our supplies. So that was a grant put to good use for the community, and we're very proud of that. And also, the mayor's task force on energy consumption had its HIV/AIDS vigil on October 7th, where we had a moment of reflection and prayer for those that we know in the community that have been afflicted by HIV and AIDS, and a moment of prayer that we can continue to work together to work to eradicate that disease from the planet. And it was also a chance to have a bit of an honest discussion about where we stand in the city on that topic. And for more information, please make sure you check the Bristol, Connecticut website as we continue to upload that information and have more presence there. And that is it for me for committee reports.
Thank you.
Yes, we've had continuing action with code enforcement. Tonight, you saw the tax freeze applications under consent, as well as continuing efforts to upgrade the ordinances when necessary, the change in building permits, and the creation of a safety net for tax collection, as a direct outgrowth of what happened on High Street last spring. So I think that's a very positive change. In terms of the Memorial Boulevard, the RFQs are due back to City Hall tomorrow, and there are two different ones. So there was great representation at the walkthrough from the engineering design side, as well as construction management side, and we're hoping to be able to review those reports over the next couple of weeks and decide on the next course. Obviously, new construction is much easier.
Business standing right for our left.
Would it be helpful, Your Honor, to formally make a motion to send that question of the lawn equipment ordinance? Okay. All right, I'd like to move that we send the question of limiting operation of commercially grade lawn equipment to certain hours of the day to ordinance committee for consideration.
Second.
Second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Anything else?
No.
Resignations.
There are no resignations, Your Honor.
Appointments. Park Board of Commissioners to reappoint Robert Freerito. Section 2-9 resignation, an expired term to twelve seventeen.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Park Commissioners to reappoint Patrick Nelligan. Section 2-9 resignation, an expired term to 12/16.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Bristol School Readiness Council to appoint Kristen Peck to replace Ann Globes, resigned 8/315. Ward of Education Member, an expired term to 8/16.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Board of Fire Commissioners to appoint Sarah Magnificio to replace James Alper. Section 2-9 resignation, an expired term to 1/17.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. And then just one here. As we all know, the city of Bristol, the Parks and Recreation Department, city of Bristol Board of Education, recently came to an agreement to consider construction of two new synthetic fields, one at Bristol Central High School, one at First Easther. As you know, the cost analysis, systems, project, and design work is underway, and we anticipate those reports early coming next calendar year. In order to speed up the process and have all parties ready to move forward, as soon as the two above mentioned reports are completed, I am creating a mayor's committee known as Mayor Synthetic Field Operations Committee. I appoint Dr. Solik, Board of Education Chairman, the Parks and Recreation Department Supervisor, the Board of Education Athletic Director, the Board of Finance Chairwoman, and myself to the committee. This committee will be supported by appropriate advisory staff from the Board of Ed and the city of Bristol. I ask the committee to make recommendations, including but not limited to the division of maintenance and operational costs, the method to be used in sharing the use and scheduling of the fields, the resolution of any labor questions that may arise, the required insurance for use of the sites, hours of use, fees to be paid by non-city parties, users, et cetera. The committee will be asked to prepare a memorandum of agreement by the parties and are requested to have those recommendations completed no later than December 31st, 2015, and that the memorandum of agreement be delivered to my office for appropriate distribution and discussion. Construction of fields at both city high schools will provide greater community access to two high-quality athletic fields and will provide enhanced athletic team opportunities for many Bristol school students across the city. The mayor and superintendent are very excited about this prospect for the joint synthetic project, and will greatly benefit both the residents of the city, as well as hundreds of students in the Bristol school systems for years to come.
Through the chair. Go ahead. Quick question. Would it be possible to also charge that committee with possibly looking at different options that might exist for the type of turf that could be implemented and weigh any sorts of?
Yeah, it's going to come through the RFP process, through Rander Russe, the Park Department Superintendent, and the Athletic Director at the Board of Ed.
Okay.
We just want this to focus on getting that agreement done that the Board of Finance had asked for. So when it comes to the Board of Finance, there's no waiting route.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
Yes.
Could you also charge the committee to look into the comments that were made from the public regarding the, to look into?
The safety issues?
Yeah, the composites.
Again, that's going to be done through the RFP process. This committee is strictly operational. So that'll be done through the, I know, I know Park Department Superintendent's already been getting some information in, as well as the Chris Caston, the Board of Ed Athletic Director. Oh, pros and cons.
Okay.
Anything else? At number eleven.
To approve the renaming of Shaw's Drive to Oakwood Street.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. On 12.
Award of Contract 2C1618, additions and alterations at Firehouse 5 to the Auto Construction Company Incorporated, $787,487. With authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
I approve.
Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Item 13.
Award of Contract 2P1629, professional services relative to investigative analysis necessary for deployment of synthetic fields to Malone and McBroom Incorporated for $40,400. With authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
I approve.
Motion made second to discussion.
I have a question. Are they going to be charged with looking at the different options considering their broad base of expertise with fields in terms of safety and suitable alternatives?
Who's they?
That actually wasn't one of the charges that was given to them. What we asked from Malone and McBroom to do was to prepare some site analysis to make sure that as we prepare to move forward, that we have whatever survey is needed, geotechnical work that's on site. In terms of designation of material, they will be providing us with cost estimates as to what that would be. I don't know whether or not they will specifically giving, be giving to us any recommendation as to a specific material for use. I think ultimately, that's a city of Bristol determination as to what it is we'll be doing. We can certainly broach the subject with them, but it wasn't one of their original charges.
Well, they have an incredible amount of background and expertise in this area. It would be foolish to not tap their knowledge on this topic.
One of the challenges that we had is the limitation of funds available to pursue this type of work. So we don't actually have the funds available to do a complete design for moving forward to engage them as a full firm. Basically, we're using the funds that we have to make sure that we've done a full-depth analysis to make sure that when we do go forward, that we actually do have a good representative cost, so that when next fiscal year comes around, we can properly model whatever it is that the city of Board of Education want to pursue.
So this $40,000 is part of what the Board of Finance approved in capital, or is this something separate?
This is what was approved, yes, in capital.
So they approved, I thought, $75,000?
They approved $75,000. We solicited proposals, and Malone and McBroom's cost, the proposal that they gave to us for the work that we defined was the $40,000.
Okay. So technically, we would have extra money to charge them with an additional charge if we so chose to?
Yes, if we so chose, yes.
Can we make that in the form of a motion tonight?
Go ahead.
Okay. Move to add an additional charge to Malone and McBroom to consider, right, Malone, from this right? To consider the different types of material possible when constructing a synthetic field and supply us with at least the health risks or potential health risks associated with that? Somebody wants to help me with something?
Best practices.
Best practices. Sounds good to me, best practices.
Now, I assume that I would then be asking them for a fee associated with whatever that work would be doing, and then come back to you for your blessing on that?
Let me ask one question before you. Chair, just throw up this RFP.
We could do it under this. Certainly, that's, that's really not unreasonable to the fact that if we can modify the base contract, it's already been designated.
So can we change the motion to up to $75,000? Because we've already had.
Right, to clear. Yes.
So whatever number comes in, up to $75,000.
Up to $75,000, yes.
Okay, that would work.
Sorry, but all we're trying to find out is if the materials that, the options that are out there for different materials, there's some that are higher quality, that will last longer, but there's some materials that are out there that possibly could be hazard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what I think we're trying to, to find out here, is what are the, if we choose option one, two, or three, and what's the hazard of using those? But, so why don't we just simply ask for you to allow, solicit another RFP for, to give us the information on, on the synthetic field, rather than muddying this up with this subcontractor, this contractor, to provide this, you know, this contract here? Keep that as is. He can give us the, that information, but hire somebody else, or if they want a bid on it, with somebody to provide us this information that we're seeking, just totally separate from this. Because now, now what I see is, we're approving this contract tonight with, with the condition that, gee, if you give us this information, you could go up to as $75,000. I'm not for that. That doesn't make any sense. But we're opening the door up for, for this one contractor. I think we need two different proposals here to go out to an RFP. Or if we go out all to, go back out again?
Chair.
With the change of the RFP request, go back out and solicit a new bid?
Go through the chair. Roger, their base contract that they have, based on $40,000, they include a general per hour charge on that, that's in that contract?
They do not. But a few clarifications. Number one, I believe the original motion that you started to talk about, well, the amendment to the original motion was to allow us to pursue an amendment to the contract to go from $40,000 to whatever that amount is to test for, to come up with recommendations for another material, not exceeding $75,000. I don't think you're giving me the authorization to make it $75,000. It would be, if it happens to be an extra $200, it would be an extra $200, not exceeding $75,000. I was talking before, I was going with the other item on that.
Second RFP?
A second, thank you. A second RFP, I think, would be impractical primarily because then you would be having a set of recommendations from one consultant, that you would then be, on a staff level, trying to merge with recommendations from a second consultant and trying to move forward with that process. And I don't think that's something that I would recommend pursuing. Whoever it is that we're getting a recommendation from, regardless of whether it's this firm or any other firm, I would like to be able to come back to you and say, the cost for this project is X amount. The product that's going to be used for this project is X amount, and not have to blend it from multiple sources. I think that's in your best interest.
I, I think what we're trying to get is up to $75,000, so we don't just tell Roger $5,000, and then he gets a bid of $5,500, and then we're back another month.
Right. And through the chair, as the one that made the amendment to the motion, I'd like to move the question, if we could, if we're clear on it?
Yes.
But there has to be a second, as always, we can't.
Second.
Motion made second. Motion at table for the amendment? Or for a motion?
Actually, the question is second on moving the question. If it's yes, then that's moving the amendment.
You're moving the amendment?
Moving the amendment, yes.
I was telling the amendment.
The amendment, the amendment.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? No. Well, no, motion passes. Now we have to vote on the actual motion. Any other discussion on that?
I just want to say that Malone and McBroom has a wide range of environmental engineers in their firm. I'm sure they will come up with a good breakdown of what the different products are and their safety concerns are. So I don't think this is going to be a very expensive endeavor.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Thank you, Roger. No. Thank you, Roger. Motion passes. Item number 14.
To award 16 contracts contained in an attached listing for additions and alterations made to Fire Engine 4 on Vincent P. Kelly Road, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary, and to waive the reading of each contract, but to include them as part of the amendments.
Rule.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Item 15.
Resolution to approve the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Is this a resolution to read?
Here to read it.
I've got it here. Resolution, Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, be resolved that in order to promote the goals of scientific, educational literacy, historical, governmental, charitable entities located in the city of Bristol by drawing upon the skills, knowledge, and experience of senior citizens. The City Council of the city of Bristol nearby establishes a Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program for senior citizens who choose to donate their time, talent, and experience by volunteering to provide services to such entities as follows. A qualifying senior citizen who volunteered to provide services to dwell upon the scientific, educational literacy, historic governmental charitable and nonprofit entities located in the city of Bristol shall be eligible for tax credit on their real property tax bills in accordance with the provisions thereof. In order to qualify the benefits, for the benefits, the Senior Citizen Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, tax credits for 65 age, 65 or older, own real property in the city of Bristol, must occupy the property as a principal residence, and must have annual gross income not more than the maximum amounts promulgated annually by the Connecticut Office of Policy Management in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes, Section 12-170A/A/B/2. Participating senior citizens who must earn, may earn an annual tax credit of up to $300 by performing the minimum of 50 hours of volunteer service in fiscal year to qualify nonprofit entities. Be, the program shall apply to volunteer work performed in fiscal year 2015, 16, and after in accordance with the provisions of the resolution and the guidelines. Policies referred in paragraph D, the tax credit shall be applied to the tax bill due by July 1st following the fiscal year in which the work is performed. Tax credits earned by the participants in the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program shall not exceed $24,000 in the fiscal year on a first come, first served basis. The assessor and senior, indeed, the assessor and senior center executive director shall develop guidelines and policies to administer the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Pilot Program, including guidelines for qualifications for participating seniors and participating nonprofit entities, and for timing and form of applications. And ask for second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. Can I ask Patty Tomchak to come up, please, and explain the success of the program so far this year?
Good evening, mayor and council. The first year of the program went very well. We had 10 recipients of the tax credit. Six were couples, and four were the individuals totaling $3,000. The total hours of volunteer service came to 1,053 hours. The recipients were very appreciative of the tax credit. They look forward to applying again this year. The word is getting out about the program. I've had already quite a few inquiries for this year, and I anticipate that the number of recipients will increase this year.
Thank you, Patty. Any other discussion?
I have discussion. So there were 10 applicants. I'm assuming at the $300 rate, which are couples eligible to double it. So $300.
$300.
So we have $3,000 worth of qualified people.
That did qualify this, this year.
That seems very low, and I think it's because we're using the same qualifications that the state does. And it would seem to me that maybe this would be a good time for the ordinance committee to look at this again as a pilot program and tweak it for this upcoming year, because I think from what I can see with these requirements, what we're doing is we're layering, and so it's the same people who are eligible for votes. I would like to see that maybe if we look at the state levels and maybe take the city of Bristol program and, and match it up to that, maybe the next couple of levels for income, because I think that's still in the mid $40,000 household range, we still have seniors who are struggling. And if we could layer it so that the seniors who are eligible for the state program get it, but then we can help the next layer up, it might be a more beneficial program. So I would like to make a motion that we refer it back to the ordinance committee for a critique and review prior to coming out with these level language.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
I would agree through the chair, Your Honor. I would agree that maybe we can all work on an even better program to encompass more people to serve, but if we take one more hack at it, taking what we learned from the first year in ordinance committee.
My only objection to that would be that I don't want to see this delayed for the beginning of the year. And I know that Patty said that there's more interest in it. Again, this thing wasn't widely known when it started.
Yes, for, can we implement this tonight, and then could ordinance adjust it as it goes through the process, amended?
We were unable to utilize this through the state statutes, because, as you know, for tax relief programs, we have to be authorized by the legislature. So this was done totally voluntarily through the efforts of the council. It did begin in ordinance committee, however, after we spoke to the assessor about this, we decided it would be better to just make it state policy.
Can you ask me another question? Can we implement this tonight, adopt it, and then perhaps, Eric, since Eric took the lead on this, he could work with your office and Tom, and Tom DeNoe and Patty, and adjust the numbers later, maybe amend it?
You could certainly do that, mayor.
Okay, so we could amend it?
If you want to wait another month, excuse me, if you want to wait another month, I mean, we may. mean, we may be able to get enough information if, as Councilman Zappo says, if we just wanted to get to that next income layer. I mean, we could certainly discuss where we want to go in that time.
Okay, so Patty, is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. So let's postpone this for one month. Councilman, if you'll work with court counsel to come up with, look at the numbers, and then bring it back next month? I think this is, this is a great program. We started this last year, especially now hearing two days ago that Social Security isn't getting a raise. You know, seniors, seniors need every help they can get, since they're on fixed income, not getting a raise, and we need to help them any way we can. So do we need, we need motion, both. Table.
You actually have a motion, the resolution on the table, but if you want to postpone, you know, two next month, yes, you can do that, but you need first and second.
All right, so let's postpone this until next month.
Make a motion to postpone this, better. I'll shake the motion.
Motion made in second, and that's to postpone until we could come up with some new parameters next month.
Okay, any discussion?
I just think that, again, I don't want the delay to be interpreted as negative, but at this point, if we use last year as an example, we granted $3,000 in tax relief and left $21,000 on the table. And I know, as do all of you, as my colleagues, know that there were many people in this community who could have used that small benefit. So I'd like to see if we could at least get it to a point and promote it appropriately so that everybody's aware, and we layer as opposed to having people having a double benefit. The more people we can reach, the better off we'll be.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Any other business?
Let me say, Henry, first, Mr. Rich. Rich, enjoy your retirement, and don't spoil the kids too much. There's going to be a pleasure serving too, as well. We serve two serbs together. But what you didn't understand is the time you thought you were right, I made you think you were right, you agreed with me. So good luck up at the state. I know you have a tough job ahead of you, and you're going to need all the energy, so good luck up here and bring us back to budget that we're all in. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Swallow. Second. Motion made second to discussion. Hearing not all in favor? I oppose.